Good evening. I'd like to call to order the closed session. And can we have a roll call, Madam Secretary? Here. Here.
Here. Here.
Do we have any public comments for the closed session items only? Hearing none, I'm going to go forward with the announcement of closed session items. Closed session, CS 1, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9, D 2 and D 3, significant exposure to litigation in one case. Recommended action.
You don't need me to recite it as you just did. We'll just be going into closed session on that one matter. We will come back and report out if there's any reportable action at the beginning of the regular session at 6 o'clock.
Let's recess into the closed session at this time. I'd like to call the meeting to order of the Planning Commission. Of September 27, 2023, the regular meeting of the Marietta Planning Commission is called to order. Madam Secretary, may we have a roll call, please?
Thank you, Chair Fisher.
Here.
Vice Chair Harland.
Here.
Commissioner Vrooman.
Here.
Commissioner Voychek.
Here.
Commissioner Lapaglia.
Here.
Let the record reflect, all members are present.
Do we have any announcement of the closed session items, Mr. City Attorney?
Nothing to report out from closed session, thank you.
Okay. If we can then determine a pledge of allegiance, and if we could all rise, stand, and we'll initiate a pledge of allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any reportable action from closed session, Mr. City Attorney?
No.
Okay. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Seeing none.
Hearing none. A call for a motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda?
I'll make that motion to approve tonight's agenda.
And second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, please do a roll call vote.
Chair Fisher.
Yes?
Vice Chair Harland.
Aye.
Commissioner Vrooman.
Aye.
Commissioner Voychek.
Aye.
Commissioner Lapaglia.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We are now going to move on to public comments. At this time, we will take public comments. Any person may address the Planning Commission on any subject pertaining to city business, which does not relate to any item listed on the agenda or on the consent calendar. Normally, no action may be considered or taken by the Planning Commission on any matter not listed on the agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Madam Secretary, do we have any non-agenda public comments?
Seeing none.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We are now going to move on to the approval of the minutes. We're looking to approve the minutes of June 14, 2023, and June 28, 2023, regular planning commission meeting as presented. May I have a motion?
I'll move approval.
Oh, wait, wait. Before we do that, Madam Secretary, are there any members of the public requesting to speak on the approval of the minutes?
Seeing none.
Okay, then I call for a motion and a second.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, Madam Secretary. Please do a roll call vote.
Chair Fisher.
Aye.
Vice Chair Harland.
Aye.
Commissioner Vrooman.
Aye.
Commissioner Voychek.
Aye.
Commissioner Lapaglia.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary. We are now going to move on to the business item. The business item is development plan permit 2021-2343 and conditional use permit 2021-2344 regarding a car wash. I want to remind everyone that the public testimony and hearing has closed, and it is not open. Do we have any of the, of the planning commissioners that have any deliberation on the, on the item?
Before we begin, I'd just like the record to reflect that Commissioner Voychek has left the dais for a non-FPPC refusal.
Thank you.
Ms. Chairman, I'm sorry. We also have a short staff presentation, if you'd like it. Otherwise, you can go ahead and dive right into your deliberations if you choose.
Let's watch it.
Staff presentation?
Please.
All right, let's have a staff presentation.
My name is Farrah Buliken. I'm doing the presentation for this business item. Here with me, we have Dennis Watts, as well, senior planner with their planning division. So as a refresher, the project proposal is a development plan and conditional use permit for the construction operation of an express car wash facility located within the Margaritaville Shopping Center at the corner of Marietta Hot Springs Road and Margarita Road. Here is a site plan of that car wash facility with the improvements proposed, the tunnel, queuing bay, and parking proposed, as well as landscaping. So on August 23, 2023, the Planning Commission held duly notice public hearing and considered all written and oral reports of staff, heard and considered public testimony on this matter, received written and oral testimony from the applicant, and considered related materials and communications which are reflected in the administrative record of this matter. On August 23, 2023, the Planning Commission used its independent judgment and considered all the reports, recommendations, and testimony set forth above, and voted 3-1, directing staff to bring back a resolution of denial for the project. Staff has the following recommendation, which was presented on the August 23 hearing, and that is to adopt a notice of exemption for infill development. The second recommendation is to adopt a resolution to approve the conditional use permit, as well as the development plan. Before use, an alternate recommendation, which is to adopt a resolution of denial for the conditional use permit, as well as the development plan for the proposed car wash facility. That concludes staff presentation. We're here to answer any questions that you may have on this project.
Let's open it up to public comments. Are there any comments regarding this particular motion? Or this particular item?
I'd just like to remind that although we are open for public comment from a Brown Act perspective, the public hearing has been closed, so none of the comments will be received as testimony or be part of the administrative record.
We have Kassen Klein.
Mr. Klein, welcome.
Staff for the presentation would just encourage the commission to adopt staff's recommendation for approval. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Do we have any other public comments?
David Stor. No other comments.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Bringing it back up to the council and closing the public comments at 6:12, is there any deliberations by any of the commissioners up here that want to talk about this, this item? Go ahead, Mr. Vroom. Mr. Vroom.
Thank you, good evening. Again, thank you for the presentation. As mentioned at last meeting, you know, some of my concerns is more related to the onsite, some of the, the traffic related or anticipated or could be, basically. And I think I had mentioned before, the stacking and some of the, the ingress into the, into the anticipated car wash, and then also, you know, the exiting through there. And then, is there significant or potential mitigation or conditions of approval that would address that? I'll give you an example, there's been other, say, fast food restaurants here in town that, that maybe has very popular drive-throughs, or the businesses become very popular, and it has kind of overflowed into other neighboring businesses. Other car washes as well, too, maybe the stacking issue, that the way that they, their business model is such that they have the members in one lane, they have other people that aren't members in a different lane, one lane stacks up, the other one doesn't, it can go outside even onto the street. Might not be a concern essentially in this particular shopping center, but could stack and prevent other businesses from, from having vehicles access based upon popularity. Is there, is there something that is anticipated or could be planned, let's say during popular times, those type of things like that, that it, it wouldn't essentially become a code enforcement issue, a city issue at some point in time?
To answer your question, when, when it comes to concerns regarding stacking, so staff did review a traffic impact analysis, or a traffic letter that the, the project proponent prepared. So our traffic engineer did review that, and included in that study was a queuing analysis. So our code has a minimum requirement for stacking, and that's to accommodate six cars, and I believe it's 120 feet per our municipal code requirements. Now, the way the project is designed, it well exceeds our minimum requirement. Our city engineer also reviewed, or traffic engineer also reviewed, the stacking proposed for this project. So the way that it's laid out, it shouldn't interfere with the traffic onsite, so that the vehicles can queue, there's a dual queuing access there. However, if there is a condition that you folks want to perhaps impose on the project when it comes to stacking, I, perhaps that's something that we could discuss?
I would, I would also offer, from, from the city planner's standpoint, we have standard conditions on the project. If there are nuisance issues which occur on the site, we would be able to follow up through code enforcement. For example, if it's affecting an adjacent business, and we see that there's a sort of a code issue, we could, we could address that through the, the standard conditions that we have on the project. There's a number of conditions that would apply, depending on what type of operation is the issue.
And if, if they don't comply, is it, is, is the CUP, is that like, you know, is the CUP granted on a condition, or is it revocable?
Correct. Commissioner Lapaglia, the CUP is revocable, so it's conditional, based on, you know, satisfactory performance of the, of the site, so the city can revoke it in the case that it's not operated according to the, the CUP itself. And then those standard conditions, which there are a number of, that they have to comply with both construction, operations, and ongoing, there's a number of them. So staff can provide additional detail on that if need be for the commission.
Okay, thank you.
Just a follow-up question with that, you know, I, I believe most of the conditions on this, and you talk about the drive aisles and things like that, are, are based upon average, daily type of vehicles going through, but, and I'm just, my frame of reference is another car wash, the day after it rains, car washes seem to be a very popular place to go, because everyone gets the, wants to get their car cleaned. So, so the typical of having six vehicles may not, it may be kind of over, substantially over that. So where probably 90% of the time, you know, it, it falls within the conditions of approval, but on some of those other times, there's another place where, on those type of days, it stacks into, into, into the street, not like, again, not thinking that it's going to stack into the street, but could block neighboring businesses. How, how does the city, or how do these current conditions, how can we mitigate that? Is there something else that could be added? I, I look to staff maybe as a suggestion. I know it's...
It's kind of tough. I mean, it kind of gets into, I started, I know we're not at Christmas yet, but I started thinking about, you know, parking lots, and how they really, some of them only get used in the Christmas season, right? And the rest of the year, we have empty parking lots. So staff does an analysis based on the standard operating characteristics of this type of a business, along with the applicant, and that's what we look at. So it's, it, you know, there, there might be a day where, where there's, there's a lot of use of the car wash, but the, the typical operations should fall within the conditions of the conditional use permit. It's similar with other types of businesses. You can't, you know, always know that, you know, when something new, the new iPhone comes out, the Apple Store is overrun with people for a day, right? This, you know, those kind of things can happen, but the, the standard conditions that we have, that's in the code, should apply. And if there is a noise, a nuisance issue that we see that continually comes up, that's the kind of thing we would follow up through with code enforcement. But it should not, it shouldn't be an ongoing thing. If it's sporadic, then it's, it's sort of a different realm.
Yeah, look at some of the fast food restaurants that we have in town, we've had here for a long period of time, and because they were built under a different kind of condition, so many, many businesses have gone to like a double, double aisle, right? And so they temporarily, maybe certain times of the day, they put traffic cones up in order to, to mitigate that during certain times of the day, peak periods of times, and then they collapse them when they're really not needed. Is that, do we have flexibility based upon in the current conditions that, that could be, we could work with the applicant in those type of situations?
I think that's, that's the kind of thing you could ask back to staff to, to work with the applicant on a condition about, you know, in the case of this, this thing happening, we'd like a condition to, to address this issue. That's something you could offer here as part of your, you know, deliberation, is if, if we could come up with a condition that addresses your concern, and we add that in.
That, that's the biggest one that would, would address my concern.
Okay. I think that's something you could have staff look at.
So if there were a motion to approve tonight, you would want to include that condition in it?
I would.
Is there any other? Commissioner Vroom?
No, that was my, that was my concern.
Okay. Any other comments or deliberations from anybody up here on the dais? Everybody's good? Then I would ask that I call for a motion and a second. If you could put up the resolution again, please?
Which resolution?
Yeah, sorry. Which, which recommendation are we looking at here, Chair?
Is the chair making the motion?
No, the chair is not making the motion.
Okay, so we don't know what to put up until we know what the motion might be.
Okay. Do we have a motion and a second?
I would make a motion to approve, as worded, if you need me to read the motion to approve.
I can read it for you as staff, if you'd like.
That's fine.
And then you could work on your condition language?
Yes.
Okay. So I'll read the staff recommendation. The, the staff recommendation is to adopt a notice of exemption for infill development pursuant to the guidelines of the implementation of the California Environmental Quality Act, and adopt a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Marietta to approve development plan permit DP 2021-2343 and conditional use permit CUP 2021-2344 for the construction and operation of a one-story, 3,589 square foot car wash facility with associated improvements located on a 1.5 acre site within the Margaritaville Shopping Center, APN 913160070, based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval in exhibits A and B, and the operation statement in exhibit C.
As amended? With amended condition?
Well, yeah, as amended with Commissioner Vrooman's motion.
And I would add a condition in there for, in the condition of approval, that the applicant would mitigate any temporary traffic increases that could impact neighboring businesses through the use of additional temporary drive aisles, traffic cones, or other traffic mitigating factors to minimize access, or to maximize access, but to mitigate the issues with neighboring businesses. Basically, be a, be a good neighbor. However you want to clean that up and make it with that intent.
No.
Staff can work with the applicant on the clean language, as long as we have the intent. Before we solicit a second, would it be okay to ask, inquire of the applicant if they'd be willing to consent to such a change?
State your name, please.
Good evening, David Stor, PO Box 6763, Folsom, California. I represent Quick Quack tonight, and we agree, or will work with staff to work on the text and the language and consent to that condition of approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other public comments?
No, we'd be looking for a second. We have a pending motion, we're just looking for a second now.
We have a pending motion with a modification to the conditions of approval. Do I hear a second?
I'll second, Chair.
Thank you. And Madam Secretary, could we please have a roll call vote?
Chair Fisher?
Yes, aye.
Vice Chair Harland?
Uh, no.
Commissioner Vrooman?
Aye.
Commissioner Lapaglia?
Aye.
Motion carries 3, 3-1-1.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. And can we take just a two-minute break? And we'll be, we'll be right back. Hospitality Hill Retail Center and Self-Storage Development Plan 2022-2500 and Conditional Use Permit 2022-2501 to construct and operate a retail center and self-storage center located northwest of the intersection of Los Alamos Road and Hospitality Place.
Yeah, Chair Fisher, we, tonight we have Aaron Rintamaki, associate planner, with the presentation.
Are there any members of the Planning Commission that wish to abstain from this particular item? Seeing none, we will proceed forward to the staff presentation.
Good evening, Chairman Fisher, Vice Chair Harland, distinguished members of the Planning Commission. Thank you, Chair, for the introduction. Today, we are going to a property site fronting Interstate 15. The map depicts the site outlined in black above. The proposal before you this evening is a development plan and conditional use permit request to develop the site to construct three commercial buildings and associated site improvements, and to conditionally permit the use of the buildings for self-storage operations. The project site is identified in the city's general plan, land use element, as commercial, and the zoning is regional commercial. Personal storage facilities defined under this use type are conditionally permitted uses within the regional commercial zone. Before we discuss the layout of the site plan, this slide is meant to familiarize ourselves with the main entrance of the project site. It's a concept snapshot view of the constructed project. This is a view along Hospitality Place, looking west, if you're looking towards the plateau. Here we are at the site plan, which is a bird's eye view of the project site. The previous slide depicted what the main entrance would look like, and the site plan notes the location of the main entrance. Three buildings are proposed for the site. Buildings A and B, which are here and here, are being designed to accommodate personal self-storage units. The applicant has applied for a conditional use permit, as I previously stated, which is to allow use of these two buildings as a self-storage use for your consideration this evening. Building C, on the far right-hand side over here, is being designed as a general commercial building for retail uses, such as quick service or sit-down dining restaurants, business services, and retail businesses. The project is comprised of two parcels, and has been conditioned to process a lotline adjustment, so that the self-storage use and the retail use are located entirely on their own parcels. The self-storage buildings A and B are two different heights. Building A, which is the largest building, consists of three stories at a height of 38 feet, 6 inches, and the second storage building, which is Building B, is a single-story building at a height of 22 feet. The retail building, Building C, is also a single-story building, and it's a little bit higher at 23 feet in height. Both the buildings and the site plan design comply with the city's commercial development plan standards. For example, the retail area of the site was, was designed to provide walking pathways to direct pedestrians from the parking space to the retail building to minimize pedestrian conflicts with vehicles traveling through the parking lot. And I'm going to show where those are here on the site plan. So these are the parking spaces I'm referencing, and we have a sidewalk right up against the, the parking space, so that pedestrians can safely walk to the sidewalk and go to one of these safe crossing points to minimize conflicts with vehicles traveling through. Plaza areas were also created to provide drop-off points for unloading of passengers visiting the restaurant and retail shops, and those are placed right here and right here at the corners. The self-storage buildings were designed to have loading areas tucked into the buildings to the screen views from the street, and the footprint of three-story building along the street frontage was varied to provide visual interest. The minimum landscape requirement for a commercial parcel such as this is 20% of the site. The applicant has met the minimum standard for providing landscape on the project site at 20%, or just 20.4, or something like that. The hours of operation for the self-storage facility will be 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM during the week, 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM on the weekends. Customers will have access to the grounds and to their individual storage unit via computerized gate access. Oh, like a key fob, so they'll have... So 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM is when customers will have access to their storage unit. The, um... The storage units will be available for the customers to access every day except for major holidays, when, when the facility will be closed. The facility daily will be locked down from 9:00 PM to 6:00 AM. Now, during this time, customers can still use their little key fob to get into their storage unit if they need to do that for some reason, but in general, the standard hours will be their operating business hours. There will be one to three employees working on the site. Other than a golf cart, there will not be company vehicles on the site. Typically, two managers will work at the facility during the business hours on weekends, while one will be on the staff during the week. So this slide depicts views of what the constructed project would look like from the freeway, from Los Alamos Road, and from Hospitality Way. So this picture right here is a depiction from the 15, looking to the project site. This picture right here is a view looking from Los Alamos to the retail building. This picture right here is a view from Hospitality Way, nearest the adjacent commercial center where they have the Holiday Inn. This is a view of what the street frontage would look like on Hospitality Place. And then this larger picture here is another view of what the project would look like from Hospitality And then this larger picture here is another view of what the project would look like from Hospitality Place as you're accessing it from Los Alamos Road. The building materials include split-phase concrete masonry unit, stone veneers, metal panels, and awnings. The metal awning with dual support braces on each side and the horizontal steel accent metal overhang above the windows and tower cornice bands are the theme design elements of the two different business uses. The materials, color, texture, and design elements are designed to be consistent for the retail, restaurant, and storage uses. The proposed architecture and materials are completely, are complimentary to the existing commercial and residential development in the surrounding areas. And this is a picture of the, uh, single-story self-storage building. So an errata has been placed on the diet, dais, and provided to you to add the following condition to Exhibit A Development Plan Conditions of Approval. And that condition reads as follows. "The permitty shall satisfy the mitigation fee required for the loss of onsite trees that cannot be incorporated within the landscape plan. And as per the tree ordinance, the permitty will provide a payment of $25,000 to the City of Marietta." That condition has been added to Exhibit A of the Development Plan. So in conclusion, it's staff recommendation to adopt the CEQA exemption and to adopt the resolution approving the Development Plan and Conditional Use Permit. I have the recommendation placed on this slide, so it's easily readable for when it's appropriate. Decided again. So that, that concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your staff presentation. I know you go to a lot of work to make these presentations happen. And the committee is very thankful and respect what you do and how hard you work to get this done and out to us. So we appreciate it. I will bring this up to the commissioners, and we'll start off with Commissioner Lapaglia.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, Ms. Rintamaki. Can you please pull up the slide that has maybe the landscape view? Like to talk about and ask, you know, on this site, where are they utilizing their stormwater discharge, their bio-retention basin? Is that a requirement on this project? Can you point that out?
It's a requirement of the project. The applicant's engineers here this evening to further explain the location of those items.
Okay.
Commissioner Lapaglia, just to interject there, where you see these little boxes, if you will, in the parking lot? If you could point those out. Those are actually cistern systems, so that's part of their stormwater management plan. They have to be underground. They don't have enough room to have a large basin to treat it in the open air. So what they've had to do is convert to a more thorough type of cistern process. So that does meet the Regional Water Quality Control Board's requirements for the state of California for stormwater management. So I just wanted to jump in and provide that.
Okay, well, will this also, will they have, I believe it's called permeable asphalt, that, on this project?
You know, that, the assumptions are, when you're working on impervious and impervious areas, you know, how much are you displacing, right? So whether it's relying upon asphalt or blocks or, or that type of environment, that has been analyzed in the stormwater document. Regardless of those improvements, the outcome is that we have enough area on the property that we can navigate to the cistern systems, and we have a quantity we can handle in a large storm. So the surfacing is important, but the conclusion of the stormwater management plan is that we can treat all onsite stormwater as a product of a rain event.
Okay, so last question here. Does the, does the stormwater then stay onsite, or is it discharged into the city's stormwater system?
Once it's treated, then it's sent to the stormwater system for the city. But it has to enter as clear rainwater, so it does go through a treatment process prior to coming to the city's pipes.
Okay. And if we have a chance to talk to the engineer later, I'd be interested to know where the nearest stormwater discharge outlet, I guess, is. And I have a concern about that coming across Los Alamos on Old Monroe. But that's it for me for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lapaglia. Commissioner Varum?
Uh, just a couple questions when it comes to the traffic coming in off the street. You get your main entrance and the, the side entrance. Is that a a drive aisle that's exclusive just to the storage? And is it gated, or how's that, how's that work?
So the project has a main entrance and then a secondary entrance, as you pointed out. The secondary entrance is for the self-storage use. It has its own gate, and it would not be accessed by anyone other than someone going to the self-storage facility.
And the gate is inset to some degree, so it allows for maybe one, one vehicle at a time coming in from off the street?
Yes. This picture right here is a depiction of the gate.
I see.
The inset and the room available for the car.
Okay.
Is that gate a chain-link gate?
Yes, chain-link's not permitted in the commercial zone. This is a, a iron gate, some, a decorative iron gate.
How does it slide?
Typically, like on a track, they have like a little track that they're on.
Yeah.
Like, and they'll just close across the, the entrance.
Yeah, it opens and closes.
Okay.
In a linear line.
Sorry, Commissioner Varum.
No, that's fine. And then, obviously, the signaled intersection down at Hospitality and, and Los Alamos right there. So I'm assuming a two-way left-hand turn lane out in the middle of the street to turn, make a left turns into the property. Or is there, there's no raised center median that's gonna be put in there?
This, the street is constructed as the width that it will remain to be.
Okay, so it's not gonna get any wider at that point? Okay.
This project is not widening the street. They're adding a sidewalk.
Got it. That's all my questions. Thanks.
Commissioner Harland?
Sure, just a comment and a question. First off, appreciate the presentation and all the supporting details and specifics. It was outstanding. Looking at, for this particular development, you can certainly see the business need with this area. The mix of retail, storage, walkable, supporting the upcoming bridges, monomos, residence, parking required, 70, actually it'll be 72, traffic consistent with the plan. Whole lot to like on here. So again, well done. Any public feedback at all that came with the notice that you guys sent out?
During the public noticing period, we, we did, the city did not receive any written comments, phone comments, or in-person comments about the project.
Okay. Thank you. Nice presentation.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wojcik?
Thank you for the presentation. Can we go back one slide, the overhead? Yeah. So when I look at Hospitality Place, you got both entrances there, and they're marked by drive aisle. I also see drive aisle, though, that's listed on Los Alamos Road. But it doesn't look, there's an entrance there. Is that accurate?
There's no access proposed along Los Alamos Road.
Yeah, Commissioner Wojcik, that's just showing the width of, of the, when you get into the site and you make a left-hand turn off that first entrance, the drive aisle is 28 feet wide at that location.
Okay. Gotcha.
Okay.
Thanks for that clarification. And then, when we go to the retail building, the very bottom square footage is the fast food. Do you know if, is there gonna be a, is that a drive-through, and if so, where would the drive-through be located?
There's no drive-through proposed for this project. There is a fast food label on that. We have approved them for a restaurant use. And it does state that the Exhibit C, the operating statement, defines these restaurants. They're not gonna be pursuing a drive-through use at this building because it was not designed to accommodate a drive-through.
That was gonna be my question. So they would be prohibited from using, making that, converting that into a drive-through throughout this process?
If, in the future, if they were able to make standards fit and work, then the city would review and consider that. But in terms of today, we have reviewed it. They initially proposed a drive-through. They withdrew the drive-through due to not, due to design constraints. And ultimately, we ended up with this building that provides for a mix of restaurant and retail uses.
Okay. And then, just going back then to the ingress and egress to the, to the project, did staff find any concern that there's no ingress or egress from Los Alamos, and everything's just going out to Hospitality? Or is that a non-issue?
Hospitality Place was a, a natural access point for this project site. Having something off of Los Alamos would be a distraction to traffic flow.
Yeah, Commissioner, there would be some issues with placing a driveway on that point because you have left and right turns, right? It'd probably be a right-out, right-in only.
Right.
You have a Caltrans facility, a bridge there, so we have to think about that and the pedestrians, all that. But no, yeah, street lots. It, it's better to centralize your traffic at a controlled intersection. So the queuing and the capacity will all be done internally. There are times where you want more access points, but I believe our traffic engineer looked closely at, it's better to contain everyone at the signalized intersection because that has a freedom of movements. But to put a new access drive-on Los Alamos, you're looking at separation of access driveways. You have a 200-foot minimum. And also with the ability to make a left turn, I think that would be problematic for the design. So we believe that two points of access are adequate. And we did spend a lot of time to make sure that we had adequate circulation on the inside, given that we would have five suites that would have different uses.
And that kind of leads me to my next question then. So one of the access points, unless if I'm mistaken, and I guess I'm looking at the one that's the most northerly access point, is that gonna be cut off from the general public? Because that's just for the renters of the storage facility only? Is that an accurate statement, or is that open to the public?
That's an, that's an accurate statement. I'm gonna refer again to this picture.
Okay.
This is the gate that you referenced. This is the area.
Okay, if we go back to.
It's closed off, and it's not available to the public unless you have a space that you're renting at the facility. You'll have a, some sort of key fob to be able to access the driveway there.
Okay, so then going back to the prior slide when we look at it, is there any concern for fire that in case something happens, there's really just one ingress and egress to the public?
Fire reviewed the project. They, uh, find no issue with the drive-through or access points.
Okay. And then, I think immediately north of the project, there's retail, I believe. And there's like maybe a drive-through coffee shop or something, or. Has the city received any noise complaints from that particular center? From the school district, since that's adjacent to that center?
Not to my knowledge, we have not.
Okay. And, and I do appreciate that. I know storage units, there shouldn't be hardly any noise, except maybe occasional U-Haul trucks going in and out. And, and I do appreciate the fact that this is right by all the, the fields for, for the school, football fields, baseball fields, so. So I'm cognizant of that, and I appreciate that. And I, I was just, didn't know if we were getting already any kind of noise complaints from the other project for the school, so that's good to hear. I don't have any further questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Wojcik. I have a couple of questions. One, Commissioner Wojcik brought up the fire access. It was one of my questions, but you answered that. How about police access? Do, has this gone through the review by the police department from a standpoint of people entering it that shouldn't be entering in into it? Is there any concern there at all?
So the police department is part of the Development Review Committee, and they review the project in tandem with the other members of the committee, including planning. They had an opportunity to review the site plan and the use description. And they had no comment on the layout of the project, but they did provide conditions of approval.
All right. You don't happen to have an aerial view of this project, do you? Because I'm having a little trouble orienting myself.
I have a map that we can look at that has an aerial view with some coloring over the aerial.
Okay.
Chair, what kind of information might you be pursuing?
Well, you mentioned that there was a bridge, and I'm trying to figure out where the bridge is.
For, forgive me for making that statement. So we have an overpass that crosses over 215. It doesn't have any on-ramps or off-ramps?
Correct.
Yeah, and so that's just southeast of the project site.
So if I went down Los Alamos, I'm not gonna go in a bridge or anything. I just have that little overpass.
It's, it's the bridge over the I-15 on Los Alamos, right?
Right.
Right off the corner of the property.
Okay.
Right.
All right. Give me, go back to your other, uh, the first slide. Aaron, tell me, now, the first slide. The layout. Okay. Tell me what is, I see Hospitality Place, and that's across from Hospitality Place is the high school fields and bleachers, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I understand Los Alamos coming down to Madison or going up to Hancock. Tell me what is on this bottom edge? Is that the freeway? Or is that partial dirt? And then, this project, I don't quite, I can't visualize it.
I'm gonna refer again to
Okay, so this.
These drawings here.
Okay, so that drawing is relating to that area.
This is the freeway.
And that's along I-15?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's if you're standing literally on the freeway, looking up
Right.
at the property towards the east.
Okay, but from the layout that you showed me as a site plan, now I understand that a little bit better. Now, go back to.
You can see the top of the bridge in that photo, if you will. Like, if you look straight up, there's the edge of that.
Yeah, I see it over here.
It's, it's, sorry, we hit it good.
Yeah, I see it. It's not really a, a bridge. Correct?
It's the way to cross a freeway. I'll leave it at that.
Okay. All right. Go back to your site plan on the far north side, where you're gonna have Building B. What backs up to that, Building B?
A parking lot from the adjacent commercial center.
Of the coffee shop and the Holiday Inn Express?
Yes, there's a commercial building there, and then there's also a hotel.
Okay, so this is that vacant land prior to that development off of Los Alamos. Correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. What about CEQA? Have there been any issues about CEQA as, in your review of this particular site plan?
So staff did undertake an analysis of the project in terms of CEQA. And we reviewed various technical studies and did not find any impacts that would arise to mitigation. The, the site is exempt from CEQA. We've provided that, and so there is no issue.
What about the nights of football games and baseball games on Hospitality Place across from this? Is that gonna be any traffic issue whatsoever? Because it's also, it leads into Target Center and to the movie theater and to the restaurants.
Yes, the. So traffic was evaluated for the use of the site. So in terms of traffic, when we talk about traffic and impacts that traffic may have, we're talking about just the traffic that a self-storage facility and retail building would bring to the project site. That traffic was analyzed. There is no impact.
So I probably don't want to come to the storage site on the night of a football game. Because there's a lot of parking that goes on, on that. because there's a lot of parking that goes on, on that street, the Hospitality Place during activities of the, of the high school there.
And when a tenant of the storage building or someone going to the, to the retail building will still be able to access the site because all the parking is supposed to be provided onsite, and so there will not be an issue.
Why is the applicant proposing retail on this particular site that is predominantly storage? Do we know?
Well, we, that's a question that we could ask the applicant about their specific thought. But in terms of the project site, its own commercial, and there are a variety of uses allowed within the commercial zone. And so a, a retail building seems to be a good fit for the location that it's on, while adding the added service of providing self-storage.
All right. That's all the questions I have. Again, thank you for your presentation. It's now time for the applicant to give their presentation, and then we'll take questions from the commission members. You are typically, each applicant and appellate will be limited to a 15-minute presentation and a 10-minute rebuttal if requested. Allow applicants' rebuttal to be 10-minute if requested only. Good evening again. How are you today?
Chairman Fisher, Commissioners, staff, Kason Klein again on behalf of Katan Patel, the applicant. We also have the architect, Rick Wallace, and Ash Kirti, and our civil engineer, Manoj Haria here for any technical questions. Want to thank staff for working with us. While the project permit is a 2022, we actually did a pre-application and worked very diligently with, with Aaron and Jarrett and, and Scott Agagianian. I'll try and answer some of the questions and some of the discussion that you had, but I'm not necessarily gonna go in order that was asked. Why retail and self-storage and, and the drive-through that Commissioner Wojcik asked about? So the initial site plan and the initial project was actually a hotel and self-storage. But because of the number of fixtures, water with EMWD, that became cost prohibitive. Also, the amount of time, you, you may have read in the staff report that we're required to annex into EMWD's area, which is another reason why we're very pleased to be here tonight because we're not able to start the annexation process with LAFCO until we have a SEQA document that's approved. So subsequent to removing the self-storage, I'm, I'm sorry, the hotel, we went to retail. We went to self-storage and retail and initially had a drive-through. And as Aaron accurately described, we were unable to meet the city standard by having a, a, a drive-through. So we removed the drive-through from it, kept retail, and kept fast food as an option. That's how, that's how we arrived at this site plan. Aaron, could you put up the, the exhibit that shows, the one that we all, the over, the, the overhead with the, I think it's the landscape, because okay. I think Commissioner Wojcik asked about, and, and another commissioner about access from Los Alamos and the strip. So you'll see our property line does not go all the way to Los Alamos. That strip there is Caltrans right-of-way. And to Commissioner Lapaglia's question, the, there's an inlet, and I'll, I'll defer to, to Manoj, the civil engineer, but I'm gonna try and give it a, a go-around. So that upper right-hand corner is where our detention, our water quality detention is. There's also an existing inlet to the existing storm drain, roughly if you come down a little bit to the right, Aaron. Come there, go up a little bit and over to the left. So, to the left, right, right, a little bit to the right. Somewhere in that area, there's an existing inlet to the storm drain, the existing storm drain structure that we will tie into. Also adjacent, aside from the existing commercial center and the hot, the, the hotel, there is an, a vacant drive-through pad also that's immediately adjacent to us. The restricted access, the restricted gated access to the self-storage is, there's 50 feet of queuing. I think that goes to Commissioner Vrumen's question. And Aaron accurately described, you know, we, we, we worked with fire on, on access, ingress, egress, circulation, drive-ais, where to ladder the building and those things. There is, back to Commissioner Lapaglia, there is no previous pavement contemplated or designed at this time. There, there hasn't been any need for it. Already talked about Hospitality Way is already built out to its ultimate curb and gutter. We'll be add, we'll be adding sidewalk. I think that's all the questions or comments that the commissioners have. If there's more that, you know, we'd be happy to answer them. Commissioner Lapaglia, if you want our civil engineer to come up and explain in more detail the water quality, we're happy to do that. And let me just state again for the record, we agree with all the conditions of approval, including the errata. And that's it. I'm available for any questions, or any of our teams available for questions.
I have a question. You mentioned that there was not an approved SEQA. Can you explain that a little bit more?
So our SEQA doc-
I can handle it from staff. So when, when the project is, is approved, like in the case of tonight, if the project were to be approved, the SEQA document is signed and will be recorded, and then they will have the SEQA document they need. Until that happens, they don't have it. So they, exemption isn't approved until the commission acts, and then we record the, the document and it's signed by staff.
What happens at the point in time, once you get that SEQA document, if there's issues? Or have you done research prior to that?
Issues with, with what?
SEQA regulations.
I, I can interject. Forgive me, Chair. There are times where LAFCO or a dominant agency like a water district may have questions upon the SEQA document that we had approved. If we go through a question like that, there's the possibility of doing an addendum, which keeps it at the director level. We actually did that on a couple of projects, including Mirada Hot Springs, or Mirada Hills specific plan, and also another annexation process where they just wanted it, an extra couple of words here and there. But for them to rely upon our SEQA document, sometimes there's questions on accuracy, and there is a process to go through that. As long as it's not an EIR, which tonight's an exemption, we can facilitate that. But I just want to let you know how agencies work together to make sure that our document is consistent with state law, and they can rely upon it. If not, there's an addendum process that we can attenuate that with.
Thank you.
And, and also, so the EMWD board has already approved our annexation. The annexation process that cannot occur until we have the approved SEQA document is with LAFCO.
Okay. Got it. Commissioners, any comments? Any questions? Commissioner Lapaglia?
No, I don't think so. Thanks.
Commissioner Vrum?
Just real quick, because you mentioned the 50 feet, I think on the, the architecture depiction there, that's why I was confused a bit. It looks like it has the gate up against the sidewalk there, as opposed to, and I see on the design here, it's actually inset onto the property. That, that, why I was a little confused there. So I wanted to make sure that we had that. Also, the elevation of the, of the, the buildings and the parking lot, is it gonna be consistent with the, with the street level? Meaning, is it gonna set a little bit higher, or, or is the project gonna sit a little bit lower?
You're talking about finished floor elevation?
Right.
Not, not the roof line?
No, no. Yeah, the, just-
So we're, Manoj, I don't, we're, so, yeah, you-
Can you state your name, please?
Yeah, Manoj Haria. You need the address. 26121 Wallack Place, Loma Linda, California, 92354.
Thank you.
I'm a licensed civil engineer on this project. So let me answer your question first, Commissioners. We have the WQMP, we did the thorough, like, WQMP and hydrology at the entitlement level. So basically, we have three systems. Thank you. Near the building seat, like the top, right and the left, we are using the underground context, contact systems. They are most, like, the reliable and lot of cities. I used to work for the Ontario. So we like this system, which are approved and used by the lot of developments. So basically, it will capture all the waters from this project, and basically, it will sit there for 72 hours and it will infiltrate into the ground. So anything over about that, it will go to the city drains. Like, if there is a, because government has a regulation, we have to calculate certain amount of the flow, which will capture and it will go infiltration. But anything overflow, like in case of the, like, few months, we have a lot of rainstorms that will overflow and go to the, like, the, like, the drain, drainage systems. And we have already existing drainage system by the, yeah, that area, which collects it and goes through the Los Alamos and goes to the other side of the basin.
Manoj, could you talk about, so Commissioner Vrumen asked about the finished floor elevation.
Yes.
So my, my, so my recollection is that the self-storage units are below street grade, but as we go down-
No, no.
No, okay. So if you can address that-
Everything is like, like on the street grades, nothing is like dipping inside. Because we want to make sure it's high enough and water is flowing out.
Okay.
So everything is like above the street levels, basically.
And that was my thought, is number wa, water flow, but then also that main drive-ais coming out, because it was Commissioner Fisher that had mentioned, okay, you got the, the high school across the street. I'm assuming we're gonna, the city's gonna allow parking on that side of the street on Hospitality Lane. But accessing that drive, that driveway, ingress and egress, just line of sight, if this, and this is a city question, probably, would there be parking restricted either side of that main driveway? Because football games, those type of things like that, all of a sudden you get people parked right up against the driveway, and so someone trying to act, you know, pull out onto the street might have some, some difficulty. And it would be even more difficult if, if the, if the project was set a little bit below street grade, and so you're coming out there. You see what I'm saying? So that's why I asked that question.
No, this one is, so basically, this one is like raising above, and actually driveway is going towards the street. So anybody, like, have a good sight of vision.
Okay.
Even though everybody, if somebody's driving on the Highway, they can see. And also people who's going in, out, or in, they have a good vision.
So that, I just wanted to make sure that the, the project is at that street grade. So if there was any ability or inability to see outside, then that would be somewhat the city's responsibility as far as traffic and restriction of parking on the street. Got it.
That parking and those kids on the e-bikes racing through?
Yes.
Mr. Vrum, or you, any more comments?
I'm good, yeah. Thank you. You've answered my question. Thank you, Kason.
Mr. Harlan?
Sure. Just looking at the, the customer base, thinking about those retail storefronts. You've got the bridges, Monamos, and the high school. I would think those would be pretty attractive storefronts. Have, have you already received commitments, or are you at that stage?
I don't, I don't, I, honestly, I don't get into that. I stayed entitlements. There's two things that I don't, well, more than two things, but two main things I don't get into with my clients is, one, finance, the money, and two, any of the retail, the leasing or the sales or those things. Those, I try to stay in my lane, so. But I don't, I don't believe so. I think we probably would have talked about those. And Katan will be the operator of, of this self-storage.
Okay. Understood. Do you have a completion timeline date when you think you're gonna be up and running?
You know, that right now, the pacing item is LAFCO. And we don't, my only point of reference on LAFCO timing is what was in the Murrieta Hills EIR, and I think that contemplated two years. So-
What, what is LAFCO?
What, what is LAFCO?
Local Area Formation Agency Commission.
Commission.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, so it's Land Agency Formation Commission. It's found in every county in the state of California. They deal with the matters between cities and counties. So on Mirada Hills, we had nine property owners that didn't want to join the city of Murrieta. The rest of them did. So that's an organization that would do the benefit analysis on that one. And so LAFCO is a very important body. They deal with water districts and cities, and they actually deal with a lot of the, as you see, counties get smaller, they're giving their lands to cities, right? And so cities are growing a little bit from that. But they are tasked with that transfer. And it's a very finite process to go through. They're very thorough. And I'm happy to say that we, we, we're able to give a thumbs up on Mirada Hills specific plan amendment from that. But LAFCO is the, the last stop that you have to get permission from after you go through all other local jurisdictions. They're the ones that make the commitment, whether you can get water sewer from a certain provider or from a certain city. But I'll tell you, they're very important for growth and balancing how cities and counties grow together.
And just for putting a little historical, sorry, it was on the Blue Ribbon Committee that, that studied Murrieta County water going, being annexed by Western. And that went before LAFCO. And then, of course, they do feasibility. When Menifee wanted to incorporate Weldemar, LAFCO did the, the feasibility study on whether or not they could make it.
Interesting.
Appreciate the info. Thank you.
They're not, they're not the quickest agency, are they?
Say it again.
They're not the quickest agency to respond. Commissioner Wojcik.
Is, is there, Aaron, was there another slide that had a picture of just the retail portion? All right. Then, okay. My eyes were deceiving me. I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
What I'd like to move now, I don't have any questions myself.
Thank you.
Could I ask one more question?
Yes. Commissioner Vrum?
The, the office there, is, is the manager gonna live onsite?
No. No, no, 24 hours.
Okay.
Yeah.
That brings up the question about security. How is this facility gonna be secured after business hours and before opening hours?
So, as Aaron stated, you know, the PD, our, our, Murrieta Police Department has looked at the project and conditioned it. And prior to, I, I don't know exactly what the condition reads, but prior to, I believe it's prior to occupancy, we'll have to meet with PD to go over our, our, we'll have to submit our proposed security system, number of cameras, camera locations, recording ability, access, PD ability to access, I believe even in real time. But as of right now, we don't have any plans for onsite security.
And the manager who's sitting over there, he has a partner? There's gonna be two people-
He's the owner.
He's the owner.
He's the owner.
So the owner would have two managers onsite during the business hours?
I don't think there's gonna be two managers, but there will be a manager and, and an employee. Exactly what the employment is. So he said probably on weekend, one or two people.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Anything else right now? No?
Any other Commissioner questions for the applicant? I'd like to call now for any public testimony, Madam Secretary. Do we have any public comments, starting with proponents, opponents, and those that are neutral, in that order?
Scott Urson? There are no other speakers.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
There were no other speakers besides that.
Okay. So there's no public testimony at all?
No additional.
Other than the applicant?
No additional. All right. So I'm going to close the public testimony at 7:12. It was opened at 7:11. And Madam, I'm gonna close the public testimony is what I was gonna do, right? Which I did. All right. Discussion or debate to be consensus up here on the daisies? Okay. It's now time to call for a motion. If we could have that motion recommendation up on the screen, please?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Wait, what's the motion? Staff's recommendation?
You want me to read this into the record?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
I can read it for you.
Sure, go ahead.
Recommendation by staff is to adopt a notice of exemption pursuant to Section 15332 of the Guidelines of the Implementation of the California Environmental Quality Act for the infill development. And two, adopt a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Murrieta approving development plan- And two, adopt a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Murrieta approving development plan permit twenty twenty-two, twenty-five hundred and conditional use permit twenty twenty-two, twenty-five hundred one for construction of a retail and self-storage center with associated improvements located northwest of the intersection of Los Alamos Road and Hospitality Place. APN nine four nine two one zero zero one five, nine four nine two one zero zero one six. Based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval in exhibits A and B and the statement of operations in exhibit C.
And the errata is part of exhibit A, right?
Correct.
So it doesn't have to be read in? All right.
I read it into the record.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Madam Secretary, it's time for a mo- uh, for a, uh, vote. Can you please do a roll call?
Chair Fisher.
Yes.
Vice Chair Harland.
Aye.
Commissioner Vrooman.
Aye.
Commissioner Wojciech.
Aye.
Commissioner Lapaglia.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Can we move on now to the city planner comments?
For, uh, city planner comments, I'm going to defer to, uh, Deputy Director Ramaya first for Deputy Director comments.
Uh, good evening Chair and Commissioners. Last week I did send to you a notice of intent to the Planning Commission in regards to the terraces apartments project. I wanted to know that within the ten-day notice of intent, I have prepared a brief presentation. Uh, i- if you would like me to present that, I can that, do that tonight or now.
Is there a consensus of presentation?
Oh, I wanted to, but forgive me, I think we'll have to have one of our commissioners, um.
Right, correct, uh, before we, if we wanted.
If you could go over the normal, uh, appeal thing.
Right. If we wanted to hear the presentation, we'll have our Commissioner.
Do we have any, any commissioners that have to excuse himself?
I do, and then I'll just excuse myself for the rest of the evening, since this is the last item anyway, all right? Nice seeing you guys.
Appreciate your service. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner Wojciech.
Are we, are we kinda off the record or is this on the record?
This is, uh, it's city planner comments. We're on the agenda and, uh, it's sort of Deputy Director discretion here during city planner comments.
There's no decision being asked or to be made. It's just a presentation by staff. Commission, before I begin, so what's before you tonight is a development plan permit, a tentative parcel map, a phasing plan, and the SECO document was a mitigated negative declaration. These are all permits that our director has the authority to approve, which he has. But we wanna make sure that as we're growing as a city, you know, we're informing our commission, uh, and of course our other leaders, uh, of, of projects that may be important. And so we did present to you a little over a month ago, an eight hundred fifty-two unit multifamily project at the intersection of Murrieta Hot Springs Road and Jefferson. We went over a lot of issues. I think very similar to that, the scale of that project. But I just wanted to present tonight and see if there's any questions that you might have. And so here we go. But let me know if you have any questions along the way. All right, let's get a location here. We're to the east of Interstate fifteen, north of Murrieta Hot Springs Road and east of Sparkman Drive, south of Vista Murrieta. So I'll just stay on this slide for a second, um, to just orient yourself. It's northwest of the Triangle Property, if that would be of some help.
Where, where is the medical facility?
Uh, so you see Hancock on the right-hand side? So the Hancock corridor, if you will, that's where the medical offices are. So, so if you look in the left of your screen, uh, where the CC is, there's Hancock and Murrieta Hot Springs Road. So if you go up that, that's where Rancho Medical Center and all the offices are.
Okay.
So as I stated before, there's three permit types that are before you. This is a development plan permit for an eight hundred ninety-nine unit multifamily, uh, project. It will have a subdivision of four lots, and it'll be phased, meaning built at two times. And I'll go into those details. This is just a nice rendering of the primary access point onto Monroe, which is currently called Sparkman Drive, so I just wanna get the terminology in front of you. Uh, here's a larger, um, look at the surrounding area. This is just a figurative plot plan placed on an aerial. Just wanna let you know that there are homes in the vicinity. Uh, but you see to the, um, uh, to the bottom of the screen, if you will, the on-ramp to two fifteen and Murrieta Hot Springs Road. These are the two phases the project would be placed in, in light green color. Phase one would be four hundred and fifty-one units. And then the second phase, four hundred and forty-eight. Very much that's a financing thing for developers. They can only get financing to phase a certain amount of units. And then once they capitalize on that, they can usually get funding for the second phase. So a lot of information is on the screen, forgive me, but this is just the typical units. Uh, we have a range of a little over seven hundred square feet to up to one thousand two hundred ninety-two for the largest three bedroom, two bath. We do have an, an abundance of parking. We have over fourteen hundred, uh, parking spaces. They do exceed the typical criteria for that. These are just showing some renderings of the, uh, the, the widths and spaces of the, uh, of the parking area. Here's the landscape plan. Normally you want ten percent minimum, they're providing fifteen. We worked with them very closely to make sure that they're incorporating the right amenities, uh, for the site. And I'll just stay on this slide for a bit where, on the top of your slide, you see what's future Monroe. So if you're driving out there today, you can get a little bit down that road on Sparkman Drive, if you will. City Council many years ago approved the alignment for future Monroe. And so this project will actually implement that first segment. The goal is to get Monroe to go all the way down over the hill to Los Alamos. And we'll probably have some other projects in the future that will help build out that road. But the goal is to build out Monroe. And we're gonna get a, a pretty good segment of that within the alignment that was approved by City Council. On the top of the screen, you're seeing a notice, a, a note for a dog park, I'll get into that later. Uh, but you do have quite a few amenities for a population that will be about three thousand people. So on Monroe, this is the upper, so on the top of your image, you see that Monroe, and then there's a portion of their property. They asked me what can they do with it? And I said, well, if, if you can't put a couple of units on it, why don't we think about something that everyone could use in the larger TOD area? And so this, uh, applicant will design, um, build and pay for out of the property manager's bill, a park that the public can use as well. So I think this is a really good, um, focal point for the community where you have new residents and you have existing residents. And I think that some relationships will be born in this area. A lot of people that don't have kids have dogs and they need a place to walk. And the TOD tells us to make this a more pedestrian-oriented area. And so we do have pathways that will, uh, snake around Monroe to get to this future dog park. And again, this is a nice way for, uh, a developer to take that bill on. Because although we have fifty-three parks, um, we could use some more help, uh, from our developers. And I would say that this is a very good, uh, agreement, if you will, between government and developer to provide additional options for the public. And so I just wanted to let you know that when we have pieces of areas that we can't develop, there's other things that we can do with that. So I just wanna highlight that this would be a very positive attribute for the public as well.
You're saying that there is.
I'm sorry, can I interrupt here for one moment? Uh, I just have a concern because this item wa- is not an agendized item. I don't have any issues with receiving this information about a director's decision, but I would ask you to make notes and, uh, reach out individually to, uh, staff with your questions or concerns, regarding how this might move forward in the future. But it would be inappropriate to have any kind of discussion or anything as a group, uh, in this context. I think in the future, there's an intention to maybe bring these as a- a- agendized items that we were talking about, but in this case, because it's not, I wanna just caution the, the commission to just receive information at this point.
Thank you, City Attorney. Uh, there will be a lot of infrastructure. The grading, actually, they're gonna be able to balance most of the site. So they'll only actually need to import six hundred and forty-nine cubic yards. We triple-checked that, uh, but we see, if you're out there today, you see this is where they used to launch their old motocross bikes and it's quite hilly. They have enough dirt to make it flat and not have a lot of import. They did go through a water assessment study with Eastern Municipal Water District. Anything over five hundred units requires that. There was no issues that came back from that analysis. And so even if, um, or once the project has been approved, they will go through an effort to formalize that documentation. And just like we had said, they do rely upon our SECO document. Uh, we have furniture improvements that I'll get into on Monroe, which I just showed you, and also Vista Murrieta. And I'll get to that in a second here, so. Here's where the sewer and water lines would go, but I wanted to highlight this image. So with that red arrow, we're actually gonna provide an emergency lane, a fire lane from the project site to Murrieta Hot Springs Road. So this is a dual gated, um, uh, facility. This would be in the event that the public needs another way out or fire needs another way in. But this is something we close, worked closely with, with Murrieta Fire and Rescue. Uh, the only, this will not be accessible by the public because it will have two gates. So this is, of course, only for emergencies. Here's a little bit better of a layout of Monroe Avenue. And also, um, north, south, or up and down, if you will, is Vista Murrieta. And so this project will be required to improve Monroe Avenue and Vista Murrieta along their frontages, along with an emergency access that directly goes to Murrieta Hot Springs Road. We also work with Caltrans to make sure this didn't affect their Caltrans facility. There's special rules that when you're within five hundred feet of a on-ramp, you can't put too much stuff in there. So we're, we're in compliance with Caltrans regulations. Just wanted to talk about Sparkman Drive, which is future Monroe. If you're ever driven out there, you do this little loop-de-loop around what's a pump station. Can't move the pump station, but Eastern's gonna move it soon. The design does allow for two lanes each way to go around that pump station. So we had that evaluated, uh, for the speed and design survey. And we feel that that would be an adequate design for this site. But I know a lot of questions might come up about that pump station. We've been closely working with Eastern. They have a relocation plan, uh, in the works. It might take them a little bit of while, but we, we can do both at the same time. Uh, the architecture, uh, from this group is, um, four stories in height. Uh, this does meet, uh, what we believe is, um, our standards. Uh, this came in before we had our current objective design standards. Uh, but we believe that this is a, they were pretty front-forward in their design concept. The company's Graystar, they usually lease to higher-end folks, if you will. So they do try to put in a product that matches that consumption rate. Just some more images that show how they'll, um, they'll do some treatments for the windows and the balconies. Uh, they like to do a little bit more, um, design elements that give a little bit more pop. Articulation, shadowing, depth, um, colorization. Uh, the lower two images are their, their clubhouse. Uh, they did, they are providing a pretty robust plan that I'll show you, um, in just a few slides here. It's not just four-story, uh, apartments. They do have a collection of two-story, what are called carriage-style units. This is more for families and other folks that want a little bit more privacy. These are about four units with eight garages, uh, on most of them. But they, it is a semblance of four stories, but there's also a number of units that are two-story. And again, they have different customer bases that they're trying to attract. Just another image, um, of the architecture. They will be providing a lot of community amenities. You see a volleyball court shown here. That's just one of many features that they feel that they need to, uh, provide for the different customers that they will be leasing to. Again, just another nice image of the spa location. So here we go. In the middle is just a, a colorized, uh, aerial, if you will. You'll see a large pool in the middle. And where you see the yellow buildings, that's actually what we're showing on the larger screen. So they will have kitchen, game room, clubhouse, leasing centers with offices, a mailroom, a large fitness center, bathrooms and a pump recreation room, or a pump and electrical room. In talking with Graystar, they do spend quite a bit of time looking at what the current requests are. And in a post-COVID environment, they found that, um, live work isn't just out of your apartment. What they found is a lot of young professionals like to go and plug in their laptops at these lounge areas and be outside or indoors. So they're actually gravitating towards the current consumption. They're doing this a lot in Mexico, in the, in, in the East Coast. It's very popular where professionals that might work from home don't actually wanna be inside their home all day. But providing a clubhouse amenity, they found that that's very popular. They have a workout center, they have bathrooms. So think about it, it's a two-for-one if you're a, a professional, if you will, and you have to have that domesticated, um, environment. Additional amenities, although we have a primary pool, we have a secondary area for a family pool. Uh, we have very nice walkway areas, uh, through the site. Uh, we have exercise stations, um, and I just wanna highlight that they've done, they bring to mind a lot of the things that customers want. Like when you lease something, you want everything else. And I think they've been, uh, very attentive to what the demands are from their customer base. From me, I like to see a lot of pools. Means less people going to a pool center and using their own pools and their own electricity. So, uh, I'm a big fan if we can get more pools for these types of facilities. Just your typical one, two, three bedroom layouts. Each, of course, has a patio, uh, so that they have fresh air. The designs, of course, like I said, range from a little over seven hundred square feet to about thirteen hundred square feet. We did do a very robust SECO analysis. We went through a mitigated negative declaration. We did do an AB fifty-two tribal consultation with three of our tribal governments. Um, that went well. We also worked with US Fish and Wildlife Service, Regional Conservation Authority and California Department of Fish and Wildlife. We did a D-Best, which is a determination of biologically superior, um, design. And I'm happy to say that the agencies, um, provided us with approval for the project. We do have a large area that I've circled in red, that's behind that corner at Sparkman and, um, Murrieta Hot Springs Road. That's a jurisdictional feature, so you might see that row of eucalyptus trees out there. Most of those trees will remain, not as a buffer, but because they're planted in a jurisdictional water. So those will be protected. And the hawks and other, uh, birds in the area, they'll have a food source at the base of it. So that'll be gated and signed as avoidance area. Uh, but I wanted to say that we balanced the site by showing that we're, um, retaining the biological value of the area, which will also keep the trees, which will be a nice natural buffer. Because when you have four-story, that's a nice element to have to, to, between areas. You know, again, I, I think this is where we may bring back just informational items for your consideration. The transit development-oriented overlay district was something that was implemented two housing elements ago, if you will, or housing cycles. A little dormant for a while, but we're suddenly getting a lot of attention, and as we should. This is the area we want thirty dwelling units minimum per acre. This is in the centroid of our city. It's near our freeway hubs. It's near where transportation is, it's where our job infrastructure, our medical corridors are. But we have to be careful. So we are, as staff, looking and evaluating at how all these projects are coming online. And so that's very much why we wanted to present tonight's project to you, is that I wanted to show you that we are carefully tracking what City Council directed us to do with the TOD. We're getting a lot of attention, uh, but we're carefully working with each project to make sure that it all can be implemented in a sound, reasonable manner. But that concludes my presentation this evening. Um, just wanted to say that the Housing Accountability Act is something that's very pressing. The governor is signing a lot of bills right now, uh, in Sacramento. And so we wanna keep an eye on, are we doing our job in our HAA? And I believe we are. Again, we did a mitigated negative declaration, which was very thorough. We had about twenty-seven technical studies, as I recall, that evaluated it, including the water assessment study and a traffic evaluation that was very robust. So I just wanted to present this information to you tonight as part of the notice of intent to the Planning Commission. And, um, and again, as City Attorney advised, if there's some additional follow-up, I'll be in the office tomorrow and Friday, all through October second. So if there's anything that, uh, you guys need, please reach out to me, and I'd like to follow up on that. So thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you, Deputy. The City Attorney comments?
I just have a couple.
City Planner comment?
Couple more City Planner comments, sorry. I really appreciate, I appreciate the Deputy Director taking the time to present that to the commission. I appreciate the commission's patience. This, we just wanna be sure that we provide you this information since this, uh, determination was just made by the director. And as, as the Deputy Director talked about, it's a significant project. So appreciate your patience and, uh, and attentiveness. City Planner comments is just, uh, the Planning Commission has rendered a decision tonight on two projects. Um, those decisions can be appealed. Um, if any one member of the public would like to appeal those decisions, you can, uh, go to the planning counter or you could approach the City Planner. I'm in the office tomorrow as well. Let us know if you, if you need to appeal the project. That's it for me from, uh, City Planner.
City Attorney comments?
And for me, thank you.
Planning Commission comments, anybody up here would like to give a comment? Seeing none and with no further business may I ask for a consensus to adjourn this meeting? I have the consensus and this meeting is now adjourned at 7:33 PM. Thank you.